All right, I'd like to call the regular village board meeting to order. And I'd like to start, if everybody will join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the role, Mirevka.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
March.
Here.
Parker.
Yeah.
Ham.
Here.
Bowden.
Here.
All right, in your packets are the minutes from our July 13, 2020 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections?
The only thing I saw, not that it's a huge mistake or anything, is just the spelling of Piattone. Where you were talking about the beautification committee. Just as some plantings around the P-tone entrance sign, that's all. Missing to know. It won't be fixed.
And, anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept those minutes as corrected.
I'm motioning it.
Okay. They're moved by trustee Mirevka, seconded by trustee Jones.
Mirevka. Yes.
Jones. March. Yes. Parker.
Yes.
Ham. Yes. Bowden.
Yes.
And also in your packet are the accounts payable and payroll. The payroll for the pay period ending July 11, 2020 is $47,235.30. Accounts payable, the general fund, $33,526.70. Any questions on any of the bills or payroll? If there are none, entertain a motion to pay the bills.
A motion, second.
Moved by trustee Ham, seconded by trustee Parker. Ham.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
March.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mirevka.
Yes.
Bowden.
Yes.
Any public comments? Doesn't look like there's any public. Reports of committee, village administrator.
I would just wanted to let you all know that you might have been contacted by CMAT, the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning. So that grant that we received for local technical assistance, they've started that, so they're in phase three of contacting stakeholders. So I gave them all your contact information to reach out to you as trustees to interview you. So if you wish to speak to them, they're all, they'd like to interview you. They're also gonna interview other stakeholders, like businesses and other organizations. So that's the, they're the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, so.
So tell us, so what are they gonna, what are they trying to do? What are they gonna tell us after this is all done?
They're just doing kind of an assessment, so it's called a Piattone Priorities Plan. And they're just kind of gonna give us a direction to go as far as where we need to delve a little bit deeper in our planning efforts. So they'll give us some key recommendations in the report that they're gonna provide for us.
So yeah, I would encourage all of you to respond to that email that was sent out and set up an appointment, if you haven't already, to speak with them. Everybody got an email?
We have a steering committee kickoff meeting scheduled for next Wednesday at 6 o'clock. So we've created a steering committee. Steve Cross, when he was still here, initiated the steering committee. And that's finally gonna have a kickoff meeting. So that steering committee will be kind of the core for the project and get things picked off. And then stakeholder meetings about to be done. And then they'll continue to do their research phase of it. And that'll be just looking at our plans that exist and looking at documents they have already in hand. And then they'll continue to put their recommendations together and then we'll report back to you with the recommendations.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, that's all.
And Chief Moore gonna be here tonight, so yes, no reports. Troy, engineer report.
The only thing I had is I heard the Aqua One project on Corning is the most lately, so I think they're not scheduled as far as they know.
Any word on approval from the Navy National?
I heard that they asked for something and they sent something back, so at least we know where it's moving forward.
Okay.
Seeing that I don't have those time, we hopefully the railroad.
Okay. All right. Public works report, Tom?
Yeah, I'm gonna receive my report in your packets. Couple things I received since I did the report, some good news. Nycore for the new facility, as an environmental permit. So I talked with Amy, it sounds like they're wanting to try to get this done.
Okay.
Wind painting continues throughout the village. New spraying, we've really bad this year, in the hot summer. We have the Warren project, Troy said it's a long while, since the hot sun.
Kind of unrelated question, did we, the Tree City USA designation, did that get renewed or?
Yes, it did.
Okay.
Due to COVID, we did not receive the awards.
Okay.
But we are recognized in this year, or actually probably last year.
So I don't think we had like an Arbor Day proclamation or anything this year, did we?
No, they were, they waived all that.
Okay.
So next year.
So just make sure we remember next year, okay?
Maybe one more. Probably for the nursery is, it's not very rare. Finding trees for a shop. We didn't get an animal.
Not just a new addition, but they have to have.
Yeah.
Is there one more addition that the, you wouldn't see the park along the, the map of a former, of a senior section?
Okay.
After it ends, it's a way to work.
Right. Yeah, we're gonna talk about that and new business, so we can take care of that for sure. Yeah, as far as trees go, I just wanna kind of, you know, those ones we planted on Corning a few years ago, I mean, they're really looking nice. I just, we gotta figure some way out to keep planting trees because, you know, it's gonna pay dividends for us. And that Corning's gonna, in 20 years, that's gonna look really nice. Kind of canopy over that street, so. Somehow we gotta figure out to keep that going. Anything else for Bob? All right, Treasurers' report, Marcy?
You all have a copy in your packet for the Treasurers' report for June. Just to provide some color, we've been actively tracking the taxes from the state. In June, that would represent taxes collected in March. And we were down year over year, just over 21% for almost $30,000 for that one month. And looking forward into July, if you don't have those numbers, that trend tends to continue because now we're collecting, if you're receiving, we have those dollars in July. So we still have a few months, fucking months ahead of us before we see a little bit of that. But they are tracking where we anticipated them to be, so. And then just one other note, I don't know if all of you saw it in the Daily Journal. The census numbers are, the percentage that's been reported by Piattone, we're kind of in the lockout and we really need to get up there. So I know we're trying to re-activate some things on our website and on our Facebook page, but as trustees, if you talk to neighbors or family or friends, just maybe drop, you know, writing on your own social media pages. It's very important that we have an accurate count of our population because so many of our tax dollars are on a population basis. So we really need to actively get that number as high as we can.
Yeah, I totally agree with that. We've been stuck on, we're right at like 66.7%. I think back in May, when I checked, it was 66.0%, so not a whole lot of people doing anything about it. What I read recently is that they're gonna send out another postcard to everybody to remind them to do it. And then starting in August, I believe, is when they're gonna actually start, you know, sending people out to knock on doors. So anybody listening out there, I encourage you, it takes, I mean, I think I spent less than a minute filling that out, it was very quick to do. So like Marcy said, it's super important that everybody gets counted, so.
Not just for us, but even schools.
Oh, yes, every, every taxi body. Any questions for Marcy? Okay. Moving on, the Administrative Oversight Committee had a meeting a week ago or so. The report.
So we discussed reducing the liquor license fee for all of the businesses that were closed. And I think what we took consensus was that we planned on giving a reduction on next year's license for places that were closed, which is licenses A, E, and B. About a 25% reduction for next year. That way you can plan for it in the budget, it won't affect this year, the mounts are gonna be down anyway, so. We took action on the discussion we had after the gaming cafe request of a license reduction. Amy put together a list of outstanding water bill accounts and I think we decided to refer most of those to collections. We discussed the options available to finance the I-57 interchange improvements if we don't get that grant, so we're already starting to work profitably on whatever we gotta do there. And we kind of hashed out a plan of what we can do and Amy's doing some more investigating on that. We discussed the various top time balances for our village employees and kind of discussed a little bit how to work with the employees on those. And then finally, we discussed the ITEP grant application for the Piattone Road sidewalk project and I think we decided to pursue that again. So we'll see if we can get a sidewalk built that will connect the Bell Landing subdivision and McDonald's back to the rest of the town and people won't have to ride their bikes on Piattone Wilmington Road anymore. It's a pretty expensive endeavor, but we're hoping to get some financing from the state for that one.
So Pat mentioned the first item that we talked about, you know, reducing next year's liquor license fees for the businesses that were closed completely. Amy is gonna put together something that we could look at next week, so, you know, we can all vote on it at that time then, so. Any other questions for the AOC chair?
Other question, you know, the sidewalk program you talked about.
Mm-hmm.
About that, is there any reason we can't do that blacktop as opposed to concrete, cut the cost?
There were, well, that was part of the discussion, yeah, that was part of the discussion, that to get this grant, they required that certain, like five-foot wide concrete surface. Unfortunately, yeah.
We'll review the requirements again, Troy and I, for the new.
Yeah, and it may be, as when we do asphalt, consider a path, and it has to be wider than a sidewalk. I haven't read the details of the grant yet, but.
And it might be, you know, we wanna, do you want just a sidewalk or would you rather have a path? You know, it could be come down to some details like that, that it doesn't have to be exactly the same as you, you know, submitted last time, so, you know, we can kind of think about some of those details.
Yeah, and there's some easement challenges, I think, associated with this whole project.
Correct. And I sent you an email today that Troy forwarded to me that has some, some nice, you know, especially if you weren't at the AOC meeting, that has some good bullet points about the grant and the costs involved. And so if you all wanna take a look at that, it's a lot more concise than the, you know, PowerPoint that was this thick that I gave the committee. So good to, as a review of the new, of the grant that's available this year, this fiscal year.
You said that opens in August sometime?
Yeah, I think it was August 21st.
Okay.
August 1st.
Till November.
Okay.
Yeah, no, you're right, till November 2nd.
August to November, two applied.
All right, well, if you could look into that and kind of let us know what the parameters are. Yeah, go from there. All right. No old business, new business. First, I wanna read a letter. Dear Board of Trustees, having been elected acting village president, I hereby elect to resign from my position as village trustee effective immediately. And sincerely, Peter March. That brings us to appointment of new trustee to fill the vacancy. I'm appointing Julie Sluse, does that face pronounce that right?
Yes.
Yeah, and so Julie, if you wanna come up and Donna will give you the official oath of office.
Well, we need the advice.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Of the board.
Okay, so. Just hang out right there, that's fine. So I'd like to entertain a motion to appoint Julie to the Board of Trustees. So moved by trustee Bowden, seconded by trustee Ham. Bowden.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
March.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mirevka.
Yes.
All right, Bowden.
I state your name.
Julie Sluse.
Having been appointed to the office of village trustee.
Oh, have been appointed to the office of village trustee.
For the village of Piattone.
For the village of Piattone.
County of Will.
County of Will.
Jerusalem Square.
Jerusalem Square.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Illinois compiled statutes.
The Illinois compiled statutes.
And the laws and ethics pertaining to municipalities.
And the laws and ethics pertaining to municipalities.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of village trustee.
Of the office of village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
You sign this one for me and then I'm gonna ship it to you. This one down here, the way I want the village, the way I want the board to put the things on hand. That just said. All right, thank you.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Sure. Julie Scott, sit at the table there. Okay, next item on the agenda is a special event request from the Historical Society for the Old Mill Fall Festival, who say apply it for September 20th. Amy, do you wanna just go ahead and give us an update on that?
Sure, sure. I think this is kind of a pre-discussion of the event they wanna hold in September. Kind of getting your feel for, since everything is so up in the air and nothing is really normal, what your feeling is for them to have an event like this on Sunday, September 20th. You can kind of see their bullet points, I guess their concern is capacity. If they were to have people indoors and food service. You can see some of the vendors that they were proposing, so. You know, my thoughts on this are that they just adhere to, you know, any guidelines that are, that are out there, the state guidelines. And then food truck, we have a food truck ordinance now. If they were to have any kind of food vendor lists, would fall under those guidelines. That would be my recommendation to give to them. And then for them to submit a special events permit, like normal. And other than that, that would be my, my only recommendations for an event like this. Capacity for indoor, just like for, there are guidelines for these type of events, so I would just tell them to adhere to those guidelines that are given to us by the state. And I can share those with them if they're unfamiliar with them, help them through the event process.
And so then you all encourage them to submit, because they need a permit because they like to close on running streets there.
Right.
Right.
And I can, you know, share with them and the website through GCE all. And, you know, should give them, you know, step-by-step guidelines on how to do that.
So Troy, it's possible that Corning's still gonna be torn up on September 20th, right?
Yes. It may be a month long, but they'll be over this, so we serve the project.
Yeah, so I guess I would let them know that they might have to make other arrangements and that have. Sometimes they have vendors in the street, but that's probably not gonna, they might not wanna have a plan B for that.
I don't know if this will be an issue for them, but, you know, because nothing's said to me yet, but there's proper, there's property that might be selling also. And I don't know if that will be, I'll let them know.
Okay. Yeah, I guess my thoughts, the inside of the mill, I mean, I'd like to keep that to a minimum and if people are in there wearing masks, if they're inside, I'm not sure what the actual state guidelines are on that, but.
And I don't know that they have an official capacity number for the inside. I mean, we have kind of a general idea because they have the letting there and I have the fire department come out there, but I don't know if they have an official capacity.
Yeah. Any other questions from the board? All right, so I don't think we need to take any action on this then. This, just Amy will work with them to give them some guidance on this. And they'll probably, we'll probably see this again in the next meeting or so. All right, item C is approval of design engineering agreement with Robinson Engineering for the I-57 road improvement. So this is for the travel center project to do the design engineering to make the improvements on Wilmington Road. And is this also 88th or no? This is just Wilmington Road?
This is Wilmington Road.
Yeah, the ramps that IDOT has kind of suggested that we do. So we really can't move forward on this project until we submit this final engineering so that we can get the kind of final approval from IDOT on what they want us to do out there. Is that about covered, Troy?
Yeah, continue the work on the process. Because they have, we have the plans, yeah, this is concept, you know, for the ramps. So that's, they're gonna be concerned about, they're aware of, you know, about the progress. How much time is it? To be able to operate and stuff, so.
So this is, we kind of talked about this last meeting, but, so we wanna, we wanna move forward with this because if we, if we don't do this, you know, we're never getting approved from IDOT and there's no point in waiting on this, you guys need to move forward, so. Questions at all?
I have one question about under basic services, it just, it says the bridge deck will be admitted. So is that bridge only going to be two lanes? It's not gonna be widened at all?
Yeah. Widen bridge, lost so much money, I guess, not gonna be done. So IDOT, we need the session to allow return lanes to sort of happen. It will be for I-57, like supposed to be your policy. They allow sessions, so usually not. Because they're a little bit expensive. So the limits of the light will start and end at the bridge deck. Let's see, this would be the cost of this, the construction, of what you're gonna be doing with the bridge. The engineering? Right. Yeah, it's in the agreement, it's $99,580, is the estimated cost. Approximately, okay. Well, we already have our crew, survey crews, you know, in line to do this, so. Once we get that back in the next couple of weeks, we're hoping designing and going through IDOT guidelines to get something, hopefully submitted IDOT October. And then it'll be kind of, IDOT's mercy will have the comments they had and we still have a little company to keep doing it.
Anyway, we can tie up the developer that he can't change his mind, he have, he's had, we spent all this money. And that's some kind of a timeframe that he will guarantee that he'll continue.
Well, that's all in the agreement.
Yeah, I mean, it's all in the annexation agreement. He's really gung ho on getting started on this. I mean, he's, he's purchased the land, he's, you know, he's got a lot of costs tied up in this, so. I just talked to him, I mean, I talked to him, I guess it was about two weeks ago and, you know, he turned to dirt tomorrow if he could, so. He hasn't lost any interest in the project. Yeah, I mean, it's a gamble that we're taking that, you know, but. I don't know what else to tell you.
I think eventually we would need to do it anyway, no matter who went out there.
Well, if we had another project, I mean, if we had something similar out there, but, yeah, I mean, this is pretty specific to what they wanna do out there. But if we don't do it, you know, then that's, you know, it's dead, you know, we can't. I realize what you're trying to do, it's just that I can't guarantee that we're gonna spend $100,000 that some sweetheart, you know, couldn't come up and somebody wanna buy that land and all of a sudden he backs out. Right. We're sitting there with $100,000, somebody, we can't go anywhere. Well, I mean, if somebody else bought that property out there, I mean, hopefully it would be to, to put something in there, not just hold on to it and then, you know, maybe the study would apply to that. Yeah. Definitely is, you know, a little bit of a gamble for us, but like I said, we're kind of committed to it and move forward and we do have a lot of, you know, in the annexation agreements, there is a lot of protections for us, but like I said, I think the best thing is that Mr. Patel is anxious as we are to get this going, so. On a side note, Amy, do you wanna just briefly tell us about that intersection upgrade was put on or is gonna be promoted by the Will County Government?
Will County Center for Economic Development. So they're a. So they're a public-private economic development agency that we're members of, we're investors in. And so they're not, they're a 501(c)(3) and a 501(c)(6). So they're not-for-profit, but they do have the ability to lobby our legislators, so legally. So they can, and what, one of our problems is with the improvements at I-57 is that we're not on their five-year plan for infrastructure improvements. And we need help with, with that. We need to get on their plan. What Will County Center for Economic Development does is a lot of transportation lobbying. And so I've been trying to work with them since I've been here and so have previous administrators. And we need to get as much help as we can. And I did get some confirmation that, that Will County CED is going to put our interchange on some of their priority plans and lobby for the transportation improvements there. So I think that's a good step for us because they're always in legislators' ears, they're always pushing projects. And, and so I think this is one step for us to try to get this pushed up to, in IDOT's ear. And it's, it's something substantial that we can go out and lobbying and then it's not just us doing it. It's, we've got advocates on our behalf that have some pull.
So I mean, this is kind of down the road for, I mean, this would, you know, bring that intersection up to, you know, something nicer with longer, you know, exited entrance ramps and.
And we have a long way to go with that, especially if we want to get the bridge deck fixed.
Right.
And widened, you know.
Sooner or later, you're going to have to.
We have to. And, and so this, what we're doing now is just a, a small part of what we need to do for the long term. And, and we need to be able, because we have IDOT to work with and we have Will, Will DOT to work with, you know, we, we need to be lobbying pretty hard for these, to work with these other jurisdictions to get these improvements done with the bridge and in, with Wilmington Peatown Road, so.
All right, so I just wanted to make you guys aware that that's a good thing that, you know, we're getting on for that list for the future. But getting back to this agreement, was there any other questions for Troy or Amy about this? So all this money that we spend on this, you know, eventually will be, is reimbursable by TIF funds, correct?
Correct.
So, you know, that's a good thing. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the design engineering agreement with Robinson Engineering for the I-57 road improvement.
Motion it.
It's moved by trustee Moretta, second by trustee Jones.
Moretta?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
And next on the item, on the agenda is homecoming parade. Peatown High School Student Council requesting permission to have the annual homecoming parade on October 9th. So the letter that they sent us, it says we're requesting permission of the Village Board to have our annual homecoming parade on Friday, October 9th, 2020. While we know the next school year is uncertain, we would like to move forward with planning as best as possible. The parade has always meant a lot to Peatown community. We believe the camaraderie it brings will be welcomed and cherished now more than ever. Parade will line up at 3:30, begin at 4:00. The parade route will be the same as used last year. So I think include in your packet, I can't really, it's kind of hard to tell, but it's the usual route.
Yeah, you can color.
Yeah, that's okay. We can see the black line there, so. Any questions, comments? If not, entertain a motion to approve the homecoming parade.
Motion it.
Second. Moved by trustee Moretta, second by trustee Parker.
Moretta?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yeah.
Sluse?
Yes.
All right, so the new guidelines for branch pickup. Bob had brought up at the last meeting that they were getting too many people putting old trees out on the curb to be chipped up. So we wanted to just add a little bit to our guidelines. So as you can see, I suggested a line in there that, so tree limbs over five inches must not be longer than three feet in length and maximum limb diameter is 10 inches. Anything over 10 inches in diameter will not be picked up. And we want to add in there somewhere brush should not be piled up at street intersections. Is that kind of what you want to say?
A corner will lie on the intersection.
Yeah.
Could be on a street, man. How do you tell the difference if something's cut by a professional homeowner? As we say, we won't pick up branches if they're cut by a contractor.
Yeah, I mean, Bob, how are you going to enforce this? What's your thoughts there?
I mean, I got to catch them first.
Hey, what are the, what are the issues you guys are facing? I mean, you guys do a great job picking up leaves and picking up branches. I mean, it's a great service and I'm just wondering what you guys are facing that prompted this whole thing.
Being a small crew, branch pickup shouldn't take more than a day, Mike, because it's called branch pickup. Lately, this summer, this year, we run into, sometimes we're running three days because we're not just picking up branches, we're picking up trees. I mean, that's not what it's meant for. It's for branches, you know, that's this program we put on and I just think it's been, you know, used over the years. That's why there's, we revised this.
It has anything to do with the ash bar, though?
No, it's just if you don't want a tree in your yard, they, okay, they'll get rid of it, you know. The branches are fine, it's just, you know, for instance, we had a tree on the north side of town. One weekend, we decided to rent a lift. They put the whole tree out there, the whole parkway, six foot high. It wasn't take, it's just.
Have you ever refused to pick up trees?
I have not refused. But now that I'm starting to get frustrated with it, you know, because, you know, I'm trying to keep the guys, being the short staff that we have, keep them going because this, this takes a toll on your body, bending and pulling and, you know. So that's why I brought the dotted marks, this has to change. I mean, this is a program we put on, like I said. It's not a cheap program to put on. Just hold little chips to the equipment. So my plan is to do my best to keep an eye on all these, these residents as far as bringing in outside contractors. I mean, that's all I can do.
What dimensions will eliminate the problem?
I hope so. I hope so. It might take them a while to adjust to them because they're used to, obviously, the old system, but I think these are best moving forward.
So there's clearly a communication part because if people cut down a big tree and then pile it up there and think that you're going to take it and then you don't, now we've got a dead tree sitting in the parkway.
Right.
And then, then we got to fight with the resident to get rid of this thing and, you know, so there's some communication I think that needs to take place.
Yeah, I think you're right. And if the parameters are set, maybe that homeowner can be shown something like this saying, man, you're way out of spec as far as branches versus trees, you know.
So the plan is to also do a, maybe do door hangers moving forward?
Yeah.
Checklist on there.
Should we also put it in the newspaper?
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe on the website, Facebook page also.
What about like a surcharge? I mean, because I have two giant cottonwoods and it's not going to come and have a 12-inch limb fall out of the thing. I mean, pay a surcharge to get, you know, have it taken away. I mean, kind of like the pools and the fire riders, you know. I think the fire department says, I don't know what it is, 200 bucks to fill a pool or whatever, you know, some, some kind of metric to help the residents with a tough situation, you know. Just a thought. Yeah, like I said, I mean, if we don't roll this out properly, we're going to have dead trees all over this place and we're just going to be fighting with residents. And that's not your intention, I know.
No, no.
It's just, you just want people to use their heads.
Right, use their heads. Make our lives a little easier and we'll try to make theirs also, so.
Yeah, so I think it's a great idea to, like I said, the door hangers, make sure it gets changed on the website and. Get it on Facebook. People are always on Facebook. Yeah. Before we get draconian and create a bigger problem, let's start to roll this out softly and get, get people on board.
Right.
Because, yeah, we don't want your guys getting hurt, we don't want to break the equipment and if people are abusing it, that's what I said. Well, plus, I mean, I have to agree with Bob. Looking at their timesheets, I can't believe how much time they spend on branch pickup and grass cutting, you know. I mean, it's nice, you know, makes the village look nice, but when you have just four guys, you know, there's other stuff that they could be doing and so.
I think too, maybe we give them so much time and then, okay, if you do put it out there and you have to pay for us to come get it because there has to be a point if you have a policy and you don't enforce it, they're going to continue to put it out there because they know, oh, well, they'll come get it anyway.
Right.
So, you know, maybe that's where the surcharge comes into play. Not a fine, but, you know, at least to transition them into it so that we can eliminate the problem of having a bunch of branchier, you know, trees in the parkway that, because he did pick them up because that's not, they don't fit the parameters, but then they get the message that it's, it's not part of the program. And so, you know, here's the, here's what you have to do to get rid of them and then don't do it again.
What do you guys know with chips?
Lately, we, we've been giving them away. The gentleman on the country built a new home. We need to take all the chips we have this year, so. It's a money, it's a small money, but it's part of the. We give them away if the resident wants them. Or they go to conference.
So if residents wanted, they could just contact you?
Yeah.
All right, so I want to entertain a motion to approve the new guidelines and let's approve these and then maybe we can work on a surcharge, you know, amount that would be fair to everybody.
I think that's a good idea.
So.
It's a combination of the service, but then also, you know, you gotta at least pay reimbursement for the overtime and whatever else you're paying for.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll motion it as long as there's part about communication in advance.
Moved by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Jones.
Bowden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Moretta?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Amy?
Yes.
All right, questions on the press? Doesn't appear to be any here. No correspondence, communication petitions. Anybody got anything else?
I do. There'll be a public, a police and public safety committee meeting August 4th, 6:15.
Okay. 6:15?
Yes, sir.
Here?
Yep.
Okay. And then speaking of committees, do you have already a copy of this? So I put Julie on the administrative oversight and the public works committee. And then I changed the chair of the building committee to Kent. Otherwise, anything else stays the same there. I wanted to compliment the Peatown Car Club for a nice event on Saturday. They had, I think, like over 220 cars there and, and everybody's, you know, pretty much social distance, it was all outside and seemed like everybody had a nice time there, so. Did the crews go okay this year? What's that? Did the crews go okay this year? I didn't hear any complaints at all.
No, they were fine.
Be nice to get that back. Yeah. That was always fun.
I talked to Daniel on the ice cream store and they were both flopped.
Good. Perfect.
If you haven't seen the mayor's minute on Facebook, I highly recommend it.
Yeah, or if you have suggestions that she'd like me to cover, I'd be happy to, to do some of those, so. I've got a whole list of them, but I don't want to put too many out. I try to keep it as once a week, but we'll see.
We look forward to seeing them. They're informative.
That's good. I think that's it. Anybody have anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Been moved by trustee Parker, second by trustee Moretta.
Parker?
Yes.
Moretta?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Thank you. See you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Wayne?
Thank you.